I started the stream at seven, so.
Okay.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Madam Vice President.
Vice Chair, not President, not School Board.
I'm sorry.
Uh, 7:01 PM, this is the Elmont Downtown Development Authority meeting on May 24, 2023.
Uh, we have a new roll call. Uh, Ms. Booth.
It's in.
Uh, Ms. Schneider.
Present.
Miller.
It's in.
Ms. Schneider.
It's in.
Ms. Feldman.
Present.
Ms. Rose.
Anyone have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I had a couple of additions to the agenda from when I mailed it out. Um, they're corrected on the current agenda, but I added the communication from Yard Services. I added the Jeep and Bike Night. And I deleted the Masonry quote from the dumpster trail because I have five other companies that are coming out in the next two weeks to give us quotes, so we can save that until the next meeting. But that is all I have.
Communications?
Yes, okay. So, I put this under Communications because we haven't really discussed it yet, but in our bracket, we had talked about doing Jeep ORV night. I have not got the hearings for the ORV yet, so we'll just put Jeep night on there for now.
I know.
We're here now. Um, but that, I was thinking about doing a cornhole tournament. This flyer came out all fuzzy, I'm sorry. Um, the cornhole tournament, uh, Jeep nights, which are going to hopefully be the first Wednesday of the month, probably over the summer. Um, and I have a $10 per team entry fee, but pre-entry with purchase from that date, the 9th, 18th, proceed.
Is it possible you have a definition of cornhole tournament? I know one definition, which I can't say in public. So what is it in public?
Oh my God. Do you get out at all?
What else?
So it's a game.
It's a game where you toss a bag at a board that has a hole in it. And the object of the game is to get the bag in the hole.
Oh.
And there's two boards and they're opposite each other and they're a certain distance apart. Right, but with bean bags, yeah.
Well, thank you.
That's why I have kids, a kid's.
Thank you very much for inviting me.
You do have to come out and try it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Then you can learn what it is.
Yeah, left-handed even more right-handed.
That's right.
And then you have been talking about partnering with Chickies for their Bike Night at least once a month. I don't know what that looks like for us, um, but I think it would be worth exploring, trying to um, get as many people, like collaborate and get more people downtown. Um, would benefit everyone. So I don't know if anyone has any input on what the vision would be, or if you have any input on what you could use us for.
If, if you could please go up to the microphone so that it'll actually be on the video, otherwise it won't pick your voice up.
Well, let me start here then. I do Bike Night on Sundays. It goes from three to seven. I have a two-man acoustic band in the bar, uh, the food truck out front, I think I've seen. Uh, so Sundays are pretty much the days that I get the bikers, especially coming down Van Dyke. Wednesdays are gonna be a little bit hard because Bervil has their Bike Night with open patio bands. And then there's other Bike Nights in the area. So Wednesdays might be a little bit hard.
Yeah, no, we want to still work on your Sunday. Jeep Night is gonna be a whole separate thing.
Oh, on Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month, and then Bike Night, we wanted to collaborate with you on the fourth Sunday of the month.
Is that I do mine every Sunday?
And we would hope that, so this is what we've been talking about. On our end, we're just gonna focus on once a month for now because we feel like that's all we have time for this year. And obviously you do whatever you wanna do, but then next year, hopefully, we can participate weekly in things.
Yeah, to help you out more.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, I think, uh, what I really use is, uh, the Social District on the block.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Angela's working on it.
I could really use that. Um, I just got the, Angela, you gave me, um, yeah, I just got your email about the picnic tables. We've been, we've been throwing them out there anyways.
Yeah.
Just 'cause the food trucks there, so they can get their food and go sit down in the, I just saw picnic tables on the lower level. So they can go over there, eat and have the, you know, pop that the guy sells out of the food truck in. We still have pop, but, uh, yeah, if you guys wanted to help out on the Sunday thing, uh, Social District would be the thing to do. Um, it's just, it's, I'm getting a lot of bikes in here, especially with the van and the food truck, so I need as much room as possible. Like, and everybody likes to be outdoors. I can't close off the alley every Sunday and nobody wants to walk to the back and smell dumpster, so. But if you need anything from me, I'm more than happy to help in any which way. Um, I'm a big promoter with, uh, I have a Facebook thing now. I looked up a pile of the girls and we're starting to do a rally. So I got very big promotions with, um, uh, Ride, Reasons to Ride magazine. So we can put us in there even, um, I think it was like $150 for like, uh, add-in in the magazine each month. So, uh, we can do that. And you wanna move forward even next year? Derek's wonderful to work with. My girl's up on the rally. They're wonderful to work with. Picked up Victoria from Freddy's down, uh, at Garfield and Seventeen, and she's amazing with that Bike Night. So I mean, I have all the help I can get or need, so that's kind of, you guys let me know. And I can, I'm more than happy to help, I swear.
Awesome. Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I was, I've been up on, I was on Sunday and it was.
Yeah, yeah. Wait until Blue-Blu-Pluza comes, that'll be in September. And then we'll have all the bikes, all the bikes on Sun, yeah, Sundays are gonna be packed around here on Sundays in September because we have the, uh, Blue-Blu-Pluza run, which I do, and we had the Shine On for Shelby.
Yeah.
So.
Sunday is that.
Blue-Blu-Pluza is on the 10th. It's the Sunday after Labor Day. And then Shine On for Shelby is the Sunday following, so it'll probably be like the 14th.
And they get hundreds. So that's, I was just thinking, because Heritage Festival is 16.
It's the same, it's the same weekend as Shine On for Shelby. We can do it.
Shine On for Shelby, it's the same weekend as Heritage?
Yeah.
It's Sunday.
It's not Saturday though, or Sunday?
Yeah, Shine On for Shelby is Sunday.
So I was thinking, of course, I could try and write it on May 9th for that, but yeah, it's a day, it's a day after.
So, yeah, no, we're gonna be super busy. I'm trying to bring as many people in as I can, too.
Yeah.
Social District. Yes, it's, it is in the works. We're working on it.
If you have any questions, okay, can you give me my phone number? You guys got the email, of course, but it's kinda hit and miss with me. Uh, phone number works better, text. Um, work wonders.
Yeah, if you wanna give that to Angela, or Angela, give her your card, either way.
I can, I will, I prefer texts over emailing you. Is there any other thing here too? Do you remember the, um, the banners for graduation? Yep. That worked perfect.
All right.
Do you wanna write down your phone number and then I can text you?
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you. And honestly, anything you need help with? We wanna help, and.
I'll write it for you.
We want this, okay.
Yeah, I wanted to see which game you were affiliated with.
I'll wear my colors.
Right.
Oh, I, I just turned it up because it was a little.
Yeah, I can send you her logo.
Okay.
All right, cool. We can get you some, but, uh, anything else for me?
No, you were amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You are amazing.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you being here.
Right, I know, at least any time, anytime, I guess I should.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just giving Angela a project, thank you. Thank you so much. You can leave whenever you want. We are not gonna keep you here, but we really appreciate you coming. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we're open for tonight, so I think, very cold and late.
We'll have fun. Yeah. Thank you, you too.
Chickie, take care.
Did anyone else have any thing on Bike or Jeep Night?
So we should.
Can discuss that in advance, too.
Yeah.
And probably maybe not so much for Bike Night because she doesn't have a food truck there. I'm assuming he wants everyone to buy the food from him, but it'd be nice on that Jeep Night or whatever, that the restaurants have specials or, I mean, it would even be nice, and I know, um, like Tiger's opening day, like that the restaurants have, you know what I mean? Like, to get people out in town, walking around, like you have, you know, hot dogs and a beer special on opening day or, you know, um, have, just, they just, I don't feel like that they do a lot to get people in their doors. It was, well, not that the huddle did anything either, but, I mean, we have slim pickings with restaurants in downtown.
Especially ones that are open in the evening.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll discuss further in events? And then probably put these on the agenda for next time to discuss more in-depth what we're doing?
Um, next is MDA approval. I think we covered the Heritage Festival, just the formal approval permit, um, to shut down from seven to five. So that will be incredible.
Good work, Angela.
I didn't really do much besides submit the, thank. That's what I was told to. Um, the ribbon cutting for Good Grounds. I put a invite in your packet, is going to be 8:00 AM on June 2nd. That is next Friday morning. And they are going to open immediately after that, so I'm hoping that we have a crowd waiting to get in, so.
Are, are we creating an event on Facebook for that, or have they, that we can share?
I don't know if they've created an event. I have their, um, like, their ad going out on Saturday for Spotlight Saturday with the same thing. Um, but creating an event would be a good idea.
Are they not on North Main Street?
You're correct.
They're on North Main. Yeah, and 'cause my address is 126 South Main.
When I was typing it out, I was like, why does this address seem so familiar? Oh, 'cause it's Yarborough's.
What is the European deli building?
Yes, yeah. It looks so cute inside, too.
I'm excited to see the inside.
So excited. They are. They made it something. Um, the final item on.
You skipped one. Information on a nonprofit question.
Oh, sorry. Information on a nonprofit question from our work. I kind of covered this in our, um.
Oh, when we had our training.
When we had our training, but, um, the question came up about whether or not it would be a good idea for us to, uh, create a nonprofit arm of the DDA. And the short answer is that the only thing that would allow us to do is spend our money that we, um, any money we accumulate, like through festivals and not through our TIF, which is tax increment funding. It would allow us to spend that money outside of the DDA district. So it would allow us to kind of circumvent the DDA law and how we can spend the money. Um, I, I don't personally believe that that's necessary at this time with the amount of time and money it takes to create a 501(c)(3), but I wanted to pass the information along.
So then we have to deal with ongoing issues with IRS, the annual filings. And staying right on top of it, you can't miss anything. So, yeah, it, it becomes a fairly big project. Ask any CPA.
And so the advice I did get is if we decided to do that and we had a reason, I don't know that we have a reason to spend our money outside of the DDA district. If, if we did, um, the best case would be to use potentially the Chamber or the Historical Society's 501(c)(3) and have, um, as, you know, I was just advised, you obviously have to have a good relationship with these people because you'll be using their bank account. Um, so something to discuss in the future, but I wanted to pass the information along. And then the last item on communications is I received an email and then today I, yesterday, and then today I received the, the mail, um, for, from an attorney for Yard Services. Um, they are saying that we owe them $725. Um, 125 of that is late fees, which I also attached.
225?
Uh-huh.
225?
225, sorry. 225 in late fees. And I attached our contract with them, so, and I highlighted the invoice procedure. Um, but in that, the 500 is from the dispute on the amount of snow on March 3rd. So, um, that was, I forwarded that to our attorney and, um, Andy and, Andy and, uh, our attorney have been communicating as well, so. I was asked to provide that to everyone and there it is. If anyone has any questions, I can try to answer, or I can get them to our attorney, um, at this point. It's.
Is there any discussion on the merits with Mr. Tuma?
We provided him with.
I provided him with.
What's in here with our contract, with our pricing and with our, with Noah's snowfall accumulation for the day and an actual picture measurement of the snowfall for the day in the town, in the village. So we sent him everything we had, yes.
Assume no feedback from him as yet.
No, we haven't heard back yet because it was just yesterday that this came up.
Do you wanna ignore or dispute? He said those are, you can either ignore or you can dispute. Um, and then Andy responded, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, we do have to make a decision. Um, the board doesn't have any, uh, problem with that. I'll give Tuma a call. Um, knowing Nash, um, if, if we ignore it, I expect that he will start suit. Yeah.
I don't, I think Andy said.
Yeah, our response was not to ignore.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, and, yeah, knowing this man exceedingly well, we've worked with him for the last 30 years or so. Um, yeah.
I believe they gave us seven days to respond, so.
They gave us seven days to have payment.
Yeah, you have deadlines, and then when you don't meet, I mean, it, he, when you don't respond in accordance, he likes to file suit the next day to show how he is. So, um, it's, it's frustrating from the standpoint that litigation over $725, I mean, Yard Services is gonna spend three to five grand, if you can miss. Um, but the problem is, I guess you can't back down. And I think YSI has been looking for this fight. Sometime, and, you know, I did get that phone call from Tracy, saying, hmm, well, um, I have real issues. And, um, and I don't know if she wanted me to take that on, but I told her, no, I wasn't going to. Um, so, yeah, I, it, it's unfortunate we have to spend money on something like this. And it's gonna cost each side a lot more than $725. And Tracy actually could have started it in small claims for that amount of money, but, uh, if she hasn't, uh, if YSI has an attorney, it won't be there. So it'll be in District Court. And we either get probably Judge Nolan or Judge Scott. Both good judges, so. Uh, but I, I think we don't have any alternative but to contest it. Litigate it, I guess, if we have to. And rest of the board feels the same way. I mean, we'd save money, just, oh, okay, here you go, but.
Right, that's what I was saying, I don't think that's setting a good precedent going forward, that, sure, we'll just, you know, write the check.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's how I feel.
Why cave? Yes, uh, totally agree. Okay.
Any public comment on agenda items? Public? Sure, can you come up to the microphone, please? And say your name, 'cause I know somebody knows you, but I don't know who you are.
I don't.
Good evening.
I don't.
My name is Rick Dodge. I live in the township.
Hi, Rick.
I am one of the township trustees on the township board. Regarding like the Jeep Night kind of thing, if you're gonna expand that, maybe do a Car Night, ORV Night, Bike Night, maybe you guys do stanchions with removable signs, changeable signs on the top, where you could put classic car parking only, Jeep only parking, bike only parking, and then someone could put them out on those nights to keep, to keep it in front of the buildings, 'cause it's see all the Jeeps and they wanna pull over and look at the Jeeps, or, so you don't want the guy in the minivan pulling in and taking up the spot of the Jeep. You don't wanna kind of highlight that, so.
Yeah, similar to what Romeo does. They just put out, you know, they put out their road cones, but it's so well-known that people know anymore anyways, but right, exactly.
Eventually gets to that, so. But, you know, it'd meet multiple purposes, 'cause you could do any kind of night that you want, so. Okay.
Else? We need an approval of consent agenda. Motion made by Steve. Support by Krista. Do we need to vote, Angela?
Yeah.
Sorry.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Pass.
Approval of minutes.
And I had, I was looking over the minutes, um, the motion regarding, on the back page, um, tabling of invoice 1779, that was the Yard Services. Should we put some kind of, like, more, like a little bit of detail as to why we tabled it? Like, to look into the snow, um, fall, and then also the part that you had mentioned, how, um, late fees, um, should not be applied because of, um, yeah, yeah. So at least we have that in the minutes in case we need to.
Clarification.
I think more to spout on, especially since minutes will undoubtedly become a document in the litigation. So rather than just saying, bleh, uh, indicate what the foundation was. We're actually paying attention to words, facts, documents.
Sure.
English.
So do you want me?
I'll motion to approve the minutes with that, with that clarification as to why we tabled, um, 17, invoice 1779 for Yard Services.
We'll leave it to the secretary to fill in the precise language. You wanna make a suggestion exactly what the additional language should be? Oh, that kind of goes with my laws and stuff. Thanks, okay, all right, fair enough. Yeah, okay. Sure.
Thank you. Delegated that.
Yes, lots of delegation. Did we, did we vote on minutes or?
No, so.
Okay. It's Melissa's motion, isn't it?
Melissa's making the motion.
To approve the minutes with those corrections.
Yes, contingent upon.
Yeah.
Second. Second.
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next we need an approval of the May 9th special meeting minutes.
These, these minutes, it was indicated to me, will also probably become a document in the upcoming litigation that, that meeting, um, was questioned by the person, um, who's complaining about the DDA board.
Do we need more clarification then?
But, well, the.
For approval of that amount?
Yeah, well, the complaint was that, can you really, should you, is it proper, is it legitimate, to put, um, an agenda item such as that on the special meeting? Was sufficient notice given, you know, pub, the public?
Sufficient notice was given, absolutely.
I posted four days before on the website as well as on the board outside.
And the reason we put it on the special agenda was to get them paid as quickly as possible, instead of waiting till our next regular meeting, which would have been a whole nother month away. We didn't want to make them wait for their money.
Should the minutes reflect that, what you just said?
Certainly can.
Yeah, because otherwise, there were no other agenda items on this workshop essentially, so, uh, I suggest that the, um, minutes reflect that. Oh, sure. Uh, no, actually, I would, I would not, and the reason being that, yeah, could be, end up being a witness or whatever, it'd be better.
I'll motion to approve the, um, agenda for the special meeting on May 9th with the corrections, um, under the approval bills payable to reflect why, um, what those corrections were to, um, pay Yard Services in the amount of $5,140. Or?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bills payable. Any questions?
I'll motion to approve bills payable.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Treasurers' report. We have the April revenue and expenditure report, and we need approval on that. If anyone has any questions, I can answer them. I think I like this format that Kim gave us this time much better. It's a little easier to follow. I don't know if you all felt that way. I liked it a lot better this time. Thank you, Kim, if you're watching. Actually, she's not, 'cause I know she's in other meetings, but.
I cannot even express how, I mean, Laura from LDC, incredible, but to be able to just walk across the hall and talk to Kim about stuff is game-changing. Also, she's Superwoman.
She's a.
Wonder Woman, if she's watching, Wonder Woman.
Yeah, she's a very talented.
She's very thorough.
She's brilliant.
Yeah, she's a, deserves it.
Questions? Spenditure report. Or?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The April check disbursement is next. The April check disbursement is next, and we need a motion to approve that, if there's not any questions. Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Angela, Director's report?
Okay, um, the light pole was replaced, um, in front of State Farm. That was knocked down over the winter. So that's great to have a backup. Um, the clock was painted. I don't know if everyone noticed, but it looks so good. And so is the arch in Fountain Park, which looks amazing.
Looks great. If you didn't notice how ugly it was before, it looks much nicer now, in my opinion. I feel like it stuck out before, and now it kind of just blends in.
Yeah, I love it. Um, so that's done. It looks incredible. This is not on the Director's report, but while I'm thinking about it, uh, the village asked, they, they made Burley Park look gorgeous today, and they asked if we cared if they took a couple of benches over there for the service, and I said, go for it. So they're moving whatever benches they could that weren't bolted down to Burley Park, and then they'll bring them back on Tuesday, so.
Perhaps want permanent benches there?
Um, so if we ever, uh, get new ones in ours, I think we, that would be great to put some.
Be nice to have a seat there for.
There.
People, you know. Yeah, if they would like, like a garbage can over there, might not be a terrible idea, honestly. Or did we commit all of them to?
They only needed ten.
Well, maybe we should ask the village if they would like one?
Yeah. Also, Bluebird, while I'm thinking about it, Bluebird asked if they could move one of the trashcans a little closer to their back patio, and I said, sure, I don't think that that's an issue.
It's coming on Burley. Um, there's been discussion, probably for the last year or so, um, at council about that park and any modifications to it, putting any objects in it, because it is, it's dedicated land, um, it was donated, um, to the village. And I guess we have to be very careful what we do with regard to that. It'd probably be, um, worthy of discussion with our, our village manager, and maybe even Ke, like Kim Kiesler, before we say, yeah, go, go put stuff there.
Well, David was part of this.
Pardon?
David was part of the benches.
Express any concerns?
Not for, it was just for the, well, it's just for the Memorial Day service.
And I'm just saying to offer them, if they would like them, maybe once we are ready to remove them from the.
All right, David's in it, fine. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
But yes, we definitely want to respect the people who donated that and, you know, the cause for which it was donated. What happened that, we, what haven't we talked about? Uh, the project graduation banners aren't really our thing, but, um, I've been working with Andrea Cruz on those, and they should be in Monday or Tuesday. She was gonna work on them Friday, so. Brian said he could hang them on Wednesday if we wanted. I would like to paint benches in the pocket park if we're not gonna get any, because everything else is black now, except the benches, and they're still green. So I could just, DPW will help me move them to the park, and then I could just paint them on a nice day. I don't think they have to be professionally painted, especially if we're not, if we're planning on doing something in the long term, but.
Are you volunteering? Thank you.
See, I need more people to tell me to delegate. DPW has moved four of the trashcans to the Township Baseball Field since our season already started. They moved the ones that they don't empty often. And they told me that it's been two weeks now, and they said it has made no difference on the trash anywhere else, so. They also said that they would remove the cigarette butt things in the park, Pocket Park, if we gave them the go-ahead, because they said they have never even emptied them. They didn't even know that they were supposed to be doing that, so. I don't know what, what our thoughts are on that.
We're at cleanup day.
The one has to be taken out.
Yeah, one's broken.
It's burned.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right, it was like melted at the bottom. They look terrible, and I don't think we should be promoting that anyways, but that's my opinion.
See people smoking there, so I can't imagine there's gonna be a buildup of cigarette butts if that's not there, but I don't.
Pick plenty up off the streets anyways.
What about moving them behind Mikey's?
But one's definitely garbage, for sure. One is, it's ruined.
It was, there was an active fire in there. The whole backside is melted.
But yes, we could see if one of the restaurants would like them behind the restaurant.
That's fine. That's where we picked up the most was in front of and behind.
I didn't, I didn't go back there. Do they not have one?
It's meant block.
Let's see if maybe Mikey would like it behind his building. That'd be fine.
The Christmas light facade grant has been added as a line item in our budget, so we'll cover that. My favorite day of the month was when the second grade did their historical walking tour downtown. Um, I love that they do that, and it was awesome to see our next generation learning about Alman's history, and Jim Wade always does a fabulous job at the Historical Society. And he and I are going to try to write, um, a brief children's book about Alman's history to, for next walking tour, so. I think that's really it that I haven't touched on, and, or will touch on in other parts of our agenda. Oh, I actually, I lied. I did the second, um, virtual cohort meetup for Main Street today, and, it was, it was, it went really well. I think the first one had, um, a lot more people in it, and today was a lot of small group breakout sessions, so. That's moving along, so I'm excited. And when we did our first, I didn't have that in here, we did our first Main Street training as a group, and I think that that was productive and went well, and, um, it's great to have a board that is a working board, and everyone is on board to, you know, put the time in and get it done, so I'm thankful for that.
Rustic Bluebird was delicious.
And the Rustic Bluebird did amazing little lunchboxes for us.
Little giant lunchboxes for us?
Yeah, they were great. That's all I have.
Uh, new business, finance, um, our amended budget. So Kim Kiesler prepared an amendment to our budget. Our budget has to basically match what we actually spend at the end of the fiscal year, so she went through and did that for us, which was really nice. Any questions on it? I did email briefly with her about it yesterday and about our new budget for 2023, 24-year. Again, Kim Kiesler is amazing. I emailed her yesterday afternoon knowing she was out of town, and I said, you don't need to make these changes for us. I really just wanted one question answered, and she made the changes at like eight o'clock last night and sent it to us. So that was pretty wonderful.
She's out of town at a conference.
Yeah.
Like, actually.
So you know her work habits. When we've been a little shorthanded, I've gotten emails from her at three thirty in the morning.
That's gracious. And she did offer to come tonight. She's like, I probably couldn't be there till like eight, eight-thirty, because I have two other meetings to go to tomorrow. I was like, you do not need to be present. I'm like, we'll be fine, thank you.
She is hyper conscientious.
She is, very much so. Questions, discussion? If not, we need a motion to approve our amended budget for 2022, 23. Support? All in favor? Opposed? Passes. Um, so now the 2023, 24 budget, like I said, Kim prepared this. Um, I did go through and make a lot of changes yesterday with her. This is the updated one, right, Angela? The one in our packet?
Yep.
I'm not even grabbing that one anyways. I printed it too. Um, so things that we added, we're now going to have a revenue and expense account for every event that we're currently having, um, which we did not have before, or if we did, it was kind of confusing and things were put in different spots, so we're kind of gonna clear that up, so it's a little more easy to look at for us. We did throw a budget of five hundred dollars on the new small events, just to give us somewhere to start, and, you know, we'll see where we end up this year with things, and if we need to add new events next year, we can, but then there is just a open account for other events in, um, revenue and expenses. Yes.
So I added, um, a capital outlay of twenty thousand dollars. That is just anything over twenty thousand dollars she likes to put in a capital outlay, so if we decided to do new benches, new tables for the Pocket Park, if we end up being able to do something behind Maria's, leasing that property to put outdoor patio, um, so that's, that's not tied to anything specific, but that is, um, what we can, what we've budgeted to work with.
And it's good to note, last year, well, our current fiscal year, we had fifty-seven thousand dollars budgeted, so we're, we're decreasing that, honestly.
Yeah, and then also the banners, I, amenities, fixtures and banners. So last year, twenty-five thousand was spent, um, on banners, and I think, I don't think we'll use twelve thousand, but, um, so I think that number will actually end up being less, however, only nine thousand was budgeted last year, and they spent twenty-five, so I wanted to, even if we don't, you know, buy any, at least, I wanted to leave that open. Oh, and you'll note that snow removal parking lots and sidewalks is zero, because now it's just DPW wages and equipment rental.
If not, we need an approval of our budget. Support?
Support.
All in favor? Opposed? We struck item three, um.
So you can disregard that email?
Yep. Item four, facade quote, uh, Good Grounds has submitted a facade grant application, um, in over fifteen thousand dollars. Obviously, that's not how much we'll do, but that's what they had to supply us with. Five thousand dollars is the maximum of our facade grant, and we match fifty-fifty, um, and their application is within that. So discussion, questions?
It would be our only facade grant for this.
Yes, and I believe we had twenty thousand budgeted for the year. Yep, it's at the very end.
So like, paint is in quite fifty percent, but we only, our max is a thousand dollars for painting, so. But. I'm positive that's not all they've spent, if you've been by there. Mm-hmm, I know. He to, he told me he was gonna get me their number, and he ended up giving me someone else's number that does roofs, so I called, and then it was a roofer. So he said he was gonna send me the information, but I know they are swamped right now trying to get everything ready.
I wish we could give them more.
I know.
So we were just, should we add that to the agenda for June to discuss updating our facade grant?
Absolutely.
Going forward.
They have a back entryway where we were talking, or do they work on that?
They, and they have a sidewalk up window.
Yeah, so if we approve this, can we approve a further one for additional funding? Yeah, is that possible? Because then if we are thinking about increasing it, then I wouldn't want to approve this if we can give them more money, and we wouldn't be able to if we did approve it.
If I recall correctly, and this facade program does get messy. I think it says, and it's been frustrating to me, um, that if an applicant has done some work and is requesting facade grant money, that our, that the bylaws do not allow, or however we structure this facade grant program, can't give them any facade grant money if they've already done the work before they applied.
I think our whole facade grant has to be updated too, because I think that there's a lot of things that maybe made sense before that don't.
Yeah, and, yeah, I'm not saying I'm advocating for that, I'm just saying, as it presently, presently exists, like, not, not so good in updating, sure, I, I think this is, this is really important, because we're
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, upgrade downtown.
Table it, I mean, they've already, I, I, they're about to open, so it's up to you guys if you want, if we want to table it till June and then approve it, it's after we redo the language?
Eight to approve this and then change it next month, and then miss out on getting more money if we're going to update and increase.
Absolutely.
About doubling it up to ten.
So someone want to make a motion on that front?
Straight any irregularities, so, agreed.
I'll motion to table this facade grant for Good Grounds until we can look at.
Chairperson can just table it, as long, as long as we have a consensus, it don't need a motion.
Okay, so let's table it for June when we discuss updating our facade grant.
Perfect.
In fact, maybe we should discuss that in our budget, finance and infrastructure, and yes, contact them and let them know what we're doing, so they know we're not
Yep.
hold, trying to hold anything up.
Yeah.
And let's put it on our BFI committee agenda to hammer that, the details out.
Yep, we can go through the language.
To bring to the board in June.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, new business, be events. We have nothing on there?
We moved it.
Okay, so we moved the, the bike and Jeep and ORV night discussion up.
I didn't want her to have to say the whole time.
So discussion, our mission and vision statement. Do you want to speak to that one there, Angela?
I emailed it to everyone. If anyone has anything they want changed, or, um, the wording change or added or taken out, um, that's what, my wording, just from what we discussed. But I am not, would not be offended if there's anything anyone wanted to change.
I thought it was great. I really liked it.
That's the only word that caught my eye, too. Like, uh, so.
They use it in the mission and vision?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I can find a different word, for sure. Which one did you want it changed in, or does it not matter?
So you could almost even just strike it from the vision? So you could almost even just strike it from the vision and just put an economically vibrant and historically preserved? Unless someone wanted another adjective in there? Because vibrant and lively are similar, right?
Sometimes I strike it.
Sometimes less is more. Otherwise, it's, uh, well worded, I think.
Motion to adopt these things or?
Um, yes, I would think, I would think so.
Like to make a motion to adopt?
Each, each one.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the mission statement? Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adopt the vision? With the change? Anyone? Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, barricades?
Oh, real quick, um, can I ask, do do you want the mission and vision statement on the agendas, just on our website? What would you, how much do we want to disseminate the? I don't, I'm.
Website for sure, I would say. Um, add it to our Facebook, like in our about section. Yeah. Um, I mean, you could make like a pretty post of each one as you have time, if you need a filler. I don't think, I don't think it needs to be in our.
Yeah. You don't want to recite it. Oh, yeah, like how they said everything. Yeah.
I mean, that's up to everyone.
Yeah.
It's good to remind us regularly. I mean, I'm not.
Absolutely.
I'm not opposed to reciting.
Visibility.
Right?
Yeah.
Visibility, accountability.
Mm hmm.
Remind us why we're here. Okay, let's do it. Okay. Barricades, ma'am?
Um, this is kind of just an FYI. Uh, DPW has requested for the village or is going to request or has requested to purchase more barricades. Um, a lot of that is our fault. So, um, that might be something that we would want to contribute towards. A lot of the side streets, all of the side streets need to be blocked off at Van Dyke for Heritage Festival. So people cutting around don't try to pull out there. Um, I don't have any. The, the prices he gave me weren't, weren't crazy. I think he said he need, Brian said he needed like five to eight more, and there was two different types. I can't remember. Um, but they weren't more than a hundred dollars a piece tops. So just something to put on our radar that I felt was probably right for us to at, at least pitch in on that if they're gonna, you know, purchase more because they're gonna be used for
Responsible.
For our events. Yeah.
DPW is very experienced with regard to this. So if they're saying we need more barriers, we
Definitely will shut down Van Dyke, yeah.
Yep.
And they didn't ask, they didn't ask me. I, so they're not, you know, like, can you pay for this? I just know that it was asked in a department head meeting, um, to the village and I wanted to bring it up because it would be right to contribute to those. That's it. Tell you.
Some contribution, I would think.
For sure.
Yeah.
Okay. No old business? Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Come on up, sir.
South of town, there's a wire that runs across that they hang the sign for the pancake breakfast. It's never gets utilized for anything else that goes on in town. It's something to do with a permit or something with MDOT or some kind of other horseshit like that.
I don't know how much of that is.
So at the south end of Romeo, in town, they have two specific poles up there and there's a police system. So they do not have to use a fire truck to go down. And you guys will be able to put up bike night.
I like it.
G night, or B night, or a Barbie night. But I would, I would check with Romeo. Because they have two specific poles. You can see them. They're just south of like the single facade area, like downtown. Um, and that's where they always put up their signs. And I don't know if there's something that could be done again at the north end. You know, so that you catch people going north and south.
Um. I, I know in the past we've been told it's an M road issue. Have you sought clarification on that? Have we? I don't know if we have or not. Have you gone truth seeking on that one yet?
So there's not, it's not an M road when the firemen are having.
So I am, I was told that there's no issue with us putting a banner over the road. So we've already been
Okay.
Talking about
Great.
Putting stuff up at, at least for Heritage Festival. I would love to do. I mean, it used to be up for, I don't know. Sure, some people remember. It used to be up for Holiday Parade even. There was a banner across Van Dyke for a while, the couple of weeks preceding. So.
Something like the, like Bike Night or something. Sundays, it would be Bike Night, you know, first Sunday of the month, or however you want to put that, or Jeep Night. And that's a recyclable. It can stay up until Heritage Festival and then you change it, something like that. That would be a great way of utilizing it.
Absolutely.
And we could do it split for now, like half of it, say Jeep Night, the other half show our Bike Night date for now, like for summer. And then like you were saying, get one for Heritage Fest and one for Halliday's and, yeah. Awesome idea. Thank you for sharing about the pulley thing because I know that was part of it too, I think.
Reach out to the Romeo DDA, DDA director tomorrow.
Right. Thank you.
Our, but actually our bylaws don't state.
To be on the board, are you saying?
Yes.
That you can.
You absolutely can.
Read our bylaws. Yes, you can.
Our bylaws say the majority of the people have to be certain things and then it does not state any specificities with the minority of the board members.
Statute that authorizes DDAs, and I don't believe it's permissible. Rick and I have been discussing this for how many years? Five, something like that. And I, and you would be, quite frankly, you would be very valuable. Everything, every time we've had any communications, um, whatever you have to say. Um, yeah. Well, the, yes, well, that's somewhat relevant, except for the fact that what Grandma, that, that opinion by her has never been challenged in court. So it is binding law, so to speak, as it stands right now. The problem you have with it, Rick, it doesn't apply to you from the following standpoint. Her opinion was that while the statute, foolishly, because the legislature, they don't know how to legislate, says that you must have a resident who lives within the DDA district um, on your board, period. You must. And, and frequently, um, such a resident living within the DDA district just doesn't exist. And we, we've not been able to produce that. And so Granholm, which I think her, her opinion was valid, is if you can't find such a person, that, um, it's acceptable uh, to have, um, have a board that does not include a resident that lives within the DDA district. But, so if you read that opinion, it's limited to that and it doesn't apply to somebody who doesn't live within the village. So, I mean, and that, that's the problem. So the criteria we had always set, regardless, even, I think somewhat regardless of what the um, statute says, which dictates supposedly the members can be, is either you live within the village or you own a business within the village, or you operate a business within the village, or you have some other significant um, activities or function within, within the village. That was kind of the policy we had set. Regardless of what the statute said. So that's the only reason I had taken the position that if you're, if you don't have a business, start a business, Doc. If you don't have a business within the village, um, and you're not a resident, that it, it doesn't apply. So, um, and, and there's going to be some vacancy. I, I think it, it closed. Do you know in the meetings that we had this week with the agents, shall we call them, of the alleged new owner of the two buildings? Did you pick up that they've actually closed? And if, if you can't, if you can't answer, then fine, don't answer, because that has been a concern at, at our end because, uh, we've been told, yes, they did. And then we spoke to um, an agent, agent of that person who said, yeah, well, one may close type of thing. So there appears to be a question. And if you don't think you can answer it, fine. I can answer.
I was, I was told that, that they did close. Um, but I have heard from other sources that that, that they have not closed yet. So probably about the same thing that you've heard. I've heard from um, people that should know that, that, that it was not a done deal yet. So.
And while I can say this, um, attorneys do evil things and we've actually been looking at um, the Pierre County Register of Deeds and they close. Normally, the deed goes to register of deeds and the, um, the, the records, the register of deeds will show the, the deed and it's been recorded. Nothing. So makes things very interesting that agents would be sent out and phone calls with agents without my office. Like, hmm. So. They have not.
They have forty-five days to file that.
Yes, right. They do have that time frame. So, um, it, it's just odd and at, at the very least, curious. What's going on? Who knows? So sooner or later, we'll find out, I'm sure.
Asked me, are you sure they closed? And I said I was told that they did. So guess we'll see.
Source as well. Um, but it appears to still be an open question. Well, yeah, we'll see.
Any board questions and comments?
I, I'd, I'd raised, um, what I thought was a significant issue at council. A bill that was before the legislature with regard to sand and gravel mining in Minamora Township. And when this was being first discussed, somewhere from three to five years ago, they've made several attempts and local officials, but local, um, state reps and state senators from around here were able to prevent it from happening in the past. Uh, we were told back then that if it was, if it was to happen and it was permitted, we would be talking potentially about a hundred gravel trains a day and maybe double trailers. And we're also told at the time that we should be concerned be, um, because they're now going through Minamora, but, um, Dryden as well, right down the heart of downtown Dryden, which would be wonderful for the downtown Dryden. And that it was likely that they would be heading south on the M fifty-three, which means they'd be going through downtown Elmo. So I wasn't too happy about that. And it's a real hot button issue. Um, it, I was told that it was going to be rammed through. Um, I did bring it before council. I had some blowback from council because I, I was talking to our state rep, Jamie Green, who was going to be opposing it. Um, yeah, but it was getting rammed through basically. And the day it was supposed to be voted on by the legislature was, which was May sixteen, um, it was never brought to the floor. And I've been checking it every day since then. I don't know why there's a holdup because it, it was, um, it was tremendous amount of pressure and the a prohibition on local control is essentially wiped out. Turn it over to Eagle, the state agency, because it, um, it controls other mining operations. And of course, if the state runs it, they don't care about local communities, even if it does damage to them. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm still gonna try to find out what happened to it. Because it hasn't been voted on in some days, the twenty-fourth, eight days later. I'm hoping it doesn't happen because I don't think that that's gonna be very beneficial to the village. But maybe, maybe there was some kind of a hitch, which would be wonderful news, quite frankly. But it's the usual thing about money versus the people, the people, money normally wins. And for the first time, Democrats are supporting it. Why? Because the unions are supporting, said, oh, jobs. So it was in, at the, um, in the House Appropriations Committee and the chairperson, since Democrats now control the legislature, was supporting it and supporting it because the union said jobs. And Whitmer's spokesperson said, yeah, we want, want to fix the damn roads and we need sand, uh, sand and gravel. So indicating she would sign the bill. So it sounded like, ugh. But I'm, I'm, I'm keep track of it and find out what's happening because it has not passed the house yet. And then it would have to go to the center. But I, I don't know that it can be prevented from happening. It's not good news, but, um, yeah, we'll see. I'll, I'll keep track of it though. Other than that, I don't have any other bad news. Sorry. Well, yeah. It's the good, bad and the ugly.
Anyone else? No? Any future agenda items other than what we already brought up to add to June?
I don't think so.
Think we already added a lot to June. So.
But the good news is, is that I thought that I didn't rea-, well, my first year, I did not realize that we had to present our budget at the budget hearing. So we got that out of the way a month sooner than I thought because school board, we do it at the last second.
So and do we need to be present?
Um, I'm going to be there and I will let you, Steve, what, do you know what day off the top of your head that is? That's the June sixth, I believe. I'm ninety percent sure it's June sixth. That's the first Tuesday in June. Yep. I'm not, I believe seven thirty, but I can double check the time.
Yeah, we, we begin at seven thirty and, um.
But do you have the budget hearing at seven? Is it separate? No?
Budget hearing normally is seven twenty-five.
Okay, so there's a.
Five minutes before. Then of course, that normally takes much longer. So you know, the regular meeting doesn't actually start at seven thirty. But that's how it's set up. Because, um, one of the council members would have a problem getting to the meeting before seven twenty-five. So we start at seven twenty-five. And it would be a regular agenda item. So we start at seven twenty-five and it would be a regular agenda item. Um, so that would be after we do the whole consent agenda thing. So after we do the budget presentation, public hearing. And then going through the whole consent agenda, which usually doesn't take that long. And then regular agenda, you can ask to be put up first, it's fine with me. On the, on the regular agenda. So that would probably, probably until eight o'clock, I would imagine. Well, um, well, it doesn't, it's, is it necessary? No. Uh, is it helpful in terms of, again, more visibility on the DDA board? Which, you know, had been under some not kind words at one, at one point in time.
I'll do that. As long as, I'll check my schedule when we're done, but
Yeah, and I, I think it's been building and I keep telling the council, look at what they're doing. They're doing really well. So, um, having, uh, other board members there, I think would be helpful. It certainly can't hurt and it would be a positive, I would think.
Submit our budget at the same time that they vote on theirs.
Council has to approve it. Right.
I'll approve it. Yep.
Council is supposed to approve.
Shall, not should.
Uh, there was, uh,
I'm just kidding.
I think there, there was, there was an occasion where we didn't. Because, yeah, that was under a prior DDA administration where there were issues, personnel issue, yeah. Bad, bad stuff. And that's the only time I've ever seen that happen, but yeah. Oh, well, no, if you don't fix this, we're not approving your budget. Oh, they fixed it, but yeah.
To changes, if someone had a problem or something, so we'll be there to discuss.
I couldn't see any potential issues why they would not. But it's, well, especially indicating that Kiesler prepared it.
Basically.
Yeah.
Basically, yes.
She's a miracle lady, so.
Yep. I am so thankful for her knowledge, but also for the extra level of oversight. I think that it is imperative for, for transparency.
Smartest things that the DDA board has ever done. Just have the village do it, interlock like that and it brings the two bodies closer together and, yeah. It couldn't be any better than that.
Our part for having a fairly new board, brand new treasurer. I, Angela and I basically would have really struggled to put together a budget.
Sure.
You know, I've never done a budget for a board and can basically hand it to us and said, what changes can I make for you? So it was invaluable. Cause I would have spent more hours than I already did going over it.
Yeah, but all of that is in that upward direction in which this board is going, so. We could use a couple more members, but, well, three more actually, right? A weird, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
That I would like help on. Number one, if people can be there, I need at least two people to be holding the ribbon. The second thing is if anyone can think of a way to hang that banner that I did not think of in advance, let me know. There are. So I'm just trying to figure out where I could tie things to. I don't know.
Scenario?
Do you have the dimensions? It's ten foot long by four foot wide, tall. That's the word I was looking for.
So just need somebody standing there.
Yeah, but you have to be really tall, so I need Rain and someone else that is his height or
We can get Tim, Tim Dyke.
Tim, there we go.
He's a basketball player. Uh, one other thing I would recommend, and I, I, normally I go to the, to the openings, eight o'clock in the morning, maybe. But I normally, uh, normally would attend them. Um, and by reason of that fact, I know that, um, ordinarily, Tom Waring of Tri-City Times would be there taking pictures. And we'd get in the paper, which was, which is valuable. Tom no longer works for Tri-City Times. He, I've had enough, bye. But calling Tri-City Times to see if they can send somebody.
I reached out to county press and Tri-City Times and county press will be here. Tri-City Times said they would try to make it, if not, please send them a picture, so.
Okay.
I did reach out to them.
Uh, should we extend the invitation to village council to attend as well?
Yes.
So please do that, but
I can definitely email them.
Yeah.
Well, I think all, all of them work.
Right, I get it, but you know, just to extend the invitation and so they're aware. And if they could be there and, you know, get their morning coffee.
Is Tim retired now? Yeah, I see him jogging around town all the time.
Yeah, no, well, he, he, um, he's one of those people, I like to work at home.
Oh, okay.
That, I, I, he, he's hybrid, he, he does both. And he keeps threatening to move to Auburn Hills, because that's where his office is. He likes to joke around like that. No, he's not retired, I mean, everybody there is, is employed. And occasionally, so am I. Cause I work for Melissa.
That all you had then, Angela?
That's all I had, yep.
What's a journey at eighteen?
Good deal. Yeah. Good meeting.
Thanks.